How the agenda works so that if you have anything you want to share with council, you know when the appropriate time is to do that. We're going to have a presentation first and then we'll take public comment. Public comment can be about anything you wish to share with council. If you happen to be here about the public hearing, which is the land use plan related to the former athletic site. That public hearing is its own agenda item and we'd rather you hold your comments for that time because then they're not on the record related to that matter. So if you can't say for some reason until that item, we understand, but just try to try to stick with us. That consent agenda will take no time to approve. We have a number of items, but that process is very quick. And then that'll be our next item of business, the public hearing. But otherwise, we welcome our guest speaker, Jill Nicholson. She's from Braun Intertech and she's going to share with us the results of the geoscan on the former athletic real person. Hi Jill.
Hi. Thanks for, thanks for giving me some time here at your meeting to discuss this. I know the city has already invested a considerable effort in evaluating the former park site. And really happy to be able to present some of the results of the assessments that we've done on the city's behalf to date. As you may know, the, the, the park site is being evaluated for redevelopment. In two parts, one is a very useful extension of Highway sixty through the park to create a new traffic pattern. That should carry traffic coming off of the bridge to, you know, to other higher usage roads. And then also there would be the associated reconstruction redevelopment. You know, with the mixed uses residential and the like on different parts of the property. And so to that effect, Braun Intertech, my company was hired initially to do a phase one environmental site assessment of the entire property. And the phase one ESA is basically, it's like a criminal background check that you might run on a new tenant. If you were renting out an apartment, for example. We basically did a background check on this property to see based on past and existing uses. Is there any, are there any sleeper issues there environmentally speaking? That could pose, you know, contamination or buried materials or just anything, or anything that would complicate the redevelopment of the property. And so if it's okay, I'm going to see if I can, let's see. Am I allowed to share my screen? Because that would be, oh yeah, it looks like I can. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. And if you would all just let me know when you can see it. Somebody wave their hands when you can see it.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
All right. All right. Well, good thing I didn't plan to show too many maps, huh? So this is an overview of the park site. And you'll notice that there is a blue dashed line around it, which you can say, well, that's not the park. Those are homes. And this is just a buffer area around the park where we review these properties as well. We're not going into the buildings or anything. We're just looking at historical documents. Just to make sure that there isn't something maybe adjacent to the park that may may cause like a plume of contamination or something that would affect the park. So this is something where we look at, also we look at the nearby properties just to make sure that there isn't something nearby that could also pose one of those problems. So I'll just cut right to the chase. The, the orange lines crisscrossing the park. Those are one version of a roadway redevelopment plan. That's not to say that's the final version, but that's an example that we were using for our assessment. And then you may see that there are various, let's see if I can do this. There are various other red and yellow parcels, which basically correspond, yellow corresponds to what we call a medium risk for environmental contamination site. And red corresponds to what we call a high risk for environmental contamination site. And you may say, well, the park is in its entirety showing up as red. What is going on? So one of the things, I'm going to flip to our next map here. Let's see if I can stop annotating. Okay, good. One of the things that we identified was that once upon a time, half of this park was actually part of the Mississippi River. Specifically, it was part of the backwaters of the Mississippi River. Clearly, it no longer is. So something happened back in the forties, fifties, sixties kind of time period that filled in the area that the river used to be. Now, this is kind of a complicated map, but what I would like to draw your attention to is the blue kind of hatched and shaded area that comes down from the top of the map. Covers what we know as the existing backwaters area and also encompasses, you know, maybe about half kind of in a diagonal line of the former park property itself. So this was, this is one of the big reasons why the park property got ranked as a high potential for contamination area. Is that we were finding some evidence, some of it on maps, some of it just local stories. That there may have been some, what we would say, unregulated placement of debris in this area. In addition to dredge sand and other types of material brought in to fill that and bring it up to grade. There were some reports that there may have been placement of debris. People coming in and possibly just kind of dumping their trash there and setting it on fire. And then, you know, pushing it in to fill. This is absolutely not an uncommon practice. You know, in, in, in that, the middle of that century, truly not uncommon for river areas. So, but there was enough of a question in our minds as we talked to the city and, and staff and engineering staff of, you know, exactly what is it that we could be looking at here? Is this, is the whole thing possibly an area that we've got, you know, garbage, you know, buried there? Could there have been other contamination issues that arose from that? What is the degree of risk to the city's ability to redevelop the property and reroute the road? So these are, you know, two, you know, equally pressing concerns. Now, one of the tools that we use to evaluate situations like this where it's honestly, when you have buried debris that may be present in an area that you know that has been filled. It's very hard to do soil borings and get an accurate read of what is actually out there. It is also, you could also spend a lot of effort with a backhoe digging trenches across the property. And that's why we recommended to the city that they consider using a geophysical scan of the entire parcel. Which should enable us to find buried objects without having to kind of, you know, luck out and find them either through soil borings or by digging test trenches. And so that is what we, what we did. We partnered with a specialist scanning company called 3D. 3DG Corporation. They have cut their teeth scanning landfills. They have been in the Mideast searching for unexploded explosive ordinance. They've been everywhere and we've worked with them before. So what we, what we got was, oh boy, I'm going to wish I could unannotate this. My apologies for my, my pink scribbles. I'm not quite the veteran of Zoom that I should be apparently. What we got was a letter report from 3D Geophysics basically showing the site and showing the scan results. The technology that they use is electromagnetic scanning. And you can think about it basically the same as a giant metal detector. But in this case, the metal detector is on a trailer. It is pulled behind an ATV and it can scan acres per day and record all of its readings using a survey equipment. And it's very fast and accurate and it also can scan down to 10 feet deep or more. So we did have information from our review of the site to say that there had been some debris found as deep as seven feet in some test pits that had been done in the nineties. So we felt confident that we were going to be able to find something using this scanning technology. Now, again, ignoring my inconvenient pink loops on the map. This is a, this is a, what I like to call a heat map version of the scan results. Where they've taken literally thousands of data points and compiled them into a map. Where the brighter the color, the more metal specifically was found. You may ask, why is the whole thing gray? Why isn't it clear if there's, you know, maybe not any metal there? And the answer is, is that the very soil and sand that underlies the city of Wabashaw is actually slightly magnetic. And is picked up by the technology. So what did we, what did we fear and what did we hope for? We feared that based on some of these historical aerials. And this is from nineteen thirty-nine. This shows, you can see pretty clearly. I just shout maybe if this hasn't come through yet. But it, it shows pretty clearly this dark area that is open standing water. And that is the extent of what we were concerned about. The worry was that we would find debris everywhere. And I'm happy to report that we did not, in fact, find debris everywhere. Going back to our map, you can imagine kind of the extent that was formerly covered with water. If we had found debris everywhere, this map would be lit up like a Christmas tree. The feedback from the 3DG Corporation, that again, these are the scanned professionals. Was that if we had, you know, for example, like a buried landfill underneath here. We would have much more color and much more consistent color than what we actually encountered. So that is the good news, is that worst case scenario, we did not see what could have been a worst case scenario. What we did have are what I would call three lobes and a question mark. We had three areas of relatively denser blue scatter. And our 3DG clustered them. Maybe you can see here, I've added an orange overlay. This is approximately the area that based on their experience interpreting these scans where we are probably most likely to find debris. Is there some wiggle room in there? You know, yes. Are we going to find solid debris through those areas? Unlikely. It's much more likely that we're going to find some river sediment, a pocket of debris, river sediment, pocket of debris. I don't know, maybe an old car. There are some kind of hotspots within those areas. But this is not, does not appear to be consistent, you know, field of trash. We do also have an L shaped black line that we found. Which is actually what a void or complete absence of metallic property shows up as. And that is, we're guessing maybe some kind of like a concrete block wall, maybe like a temporary construction associated with, you know, perhaps this was a lay down yard. When the bridge was constructed, you know, we're, I'm waving my hands here. I don't know exactly what that's from. It's worth checking it out during a subsequent investigation phase. Because if there's something large and structural down there, we would need to be able to advise the city how to manage that material, whatever it might be. The guess is that it's some kind of like a buried concrete retaining wall. There are, you know, there are some, you can, you can say, you know, there's, there are other blue dots on there. There's a scattering of other features. Why aren't you calling that debris? And again, we worked with 3DG and you can see now I've added an overlay of some black lines. Basically, what they found was the majority of the scatter is probably associated with existing utilities, water lines, electrical connections between lights. You can see they kind of border the ballpark, for example. But these are, you know, connected features. There's probably more of them kind of going around the outside of where there's that large stockpile right now. These are areas that, they're helpful to us because when we do the next, you know, after we go through the, the funding process and, and do the next stage of investigation. We would want to make sure that we are, you know, treading carefully with anything that might still be active or energized as well. So, you know, this is pretty good news. From our perspective, given what we initially found in the phase one, which, you know, called almost the entire site into question. We were able to refine that a great deal. There still is some uncertainty out there. The chances that there might be some isolated things here and there are certainly there. And, and I guess I'm, I'm happy to address or, or answer your questions regarding the assessment. And then if you want, we can talk about, or Carolyn can talk about maybe some of the next steps. I'm happy to take any of your questions.
So I will just add that what we heard from Dietrich is we can't build a road through an area with no contamination. So we are going to have to keep investigating this and figure it out and design a pathway for the road. Jill and I also spoke, we could design the road around the contamination as well. I think when I'm looking at this, it doesn't look like that's going to be possible. But our next steps will be the phase two and we just applied for a grant for that. And then we'll, the Port Authority is going to continue to be kind of a subcommittee. I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed because it's important that you guys are aware where we're at. And so then I'll look as we continue to get some feedback from, from Port Authority on how we, we time the next steps for the phase two. But what Jill's goal is, is to target her phase two to certain areas. So we can be strategic about it and which is the point of the geo, geo scan, so.
Yes, that, that's exactly the goal. We, we would look at the, the next steps as, I don't want to say an organic process, because we are dealing with a swamp area nearby. But we're, we're talking about a gradual process where each investigative step that we take will help inform the next type of assessment. And certainly the work that we do on the south end to try to define those orange areas and see if we can, you know, see if we can find ourselves a corridor to get a roadway through that does not disturb, you know, debris or maybe has a minimal disturbance of debris. But I, I agree, we, we, we don't want to cite roadways or, you know, redevelopment features on top of things like that. But there are a variety of ways that one can deal with them. Once you've really gone in and seen what, you know, what type of material we're seeing there. Is there any contamination associated with it? If so, is it just local or does it pose some risks to some of the nearby areas of the property? If it's just local, then maybe, you know, there's a staged development plan that can take advantage of the areas on the property that don't have any of these hindrances. While we focus on getting, you know, the areas that do have some of these complications managed. But, you know, we are Braun Intertech and, you know, City Wabashaw. We are, you know, certainly not, not anyone's first rodeo. And we're certainly experienced in working, you know, in getting new transportation corridors extended through areas. And not all of them are, you know, are clean. So there's, there's a process to go through. And we are looking forward to working with you and, and staff on the process.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill?
Yeah, Bill. Thank you. I'm curious. I might be getting ahead of myself, but for what Jill's talking about and concern of the route roadway through contaminated area. Aren't we talking about putting the housing in some of that area? I mean, housing is a critical concern in the path of the road.
The plan isn't actually developed yet, is the honest truth. So I think Jill's final comment is probably what's most meaningful is that we start to think about, you know, that roadway as the first step. And then where is there not contamination? Where you can then deal with or remediate the areas that are contaminated. So there isn't a formal plan, but where things would be, the conceptual plan has residential development on the non-contaminated side closer to fourth grand. Just because it's a continuation of the neighborhood, which was the recommendation of our planning process, keep that neighborhood grid intact. So that's conceptual, that, that's, but it's, but that's sort of been what's been upheld, what's been agreed upon conceptually by port, by council, the communities embrace that. So that's kind of a long vision. Jill, I don't think questions from council should be interpreted as non-interest. We, I think this validates what we all kind of know. It's the historical knowledge, even in our own port authority includes, you know, members of port authority that remember the forties, fifties and sixties, you know, remember the fifties and sixties for sure. And recognize that that was a city dump area. So this is kind of validating. Hopefully, hopefully you're there. We appreciate your work and we look forward to what we learn next.
Okay. Well, thank you again for the time and the chance to address council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
So we always do that presentation at the beginning. Sorry to keep you if that wasn't what you're interested in. But now we would take any public comments from the audience, either anyone online. Do we have any audience members online? Or I usually prioritize people here because it's kind of quicker for people in the room to get the microphone. If you want to speak, just come up to the podium, state your name and, and place residence for the record. And then share a couple of minutes of counseling so that everyone has a chance to talk.
Okay, as far as I'm aware, it's, yeah, it's just the only one that I have on it, but everyone else is here.
Okay. Well, if you're just here to listen in at any time, if you need to go, we don't, we're not disturbed by that. It's not, doesn't disrupt the meeting. We just want you to keep here for the part that's very interesting to you and we'll move on. So changes or additions to the agenda by staff or council. My mayor presentation is not, is exemplary. We are very, very busy. I was talking to Joe. We're missing five consecutive games or five combined games this, this evening. It's just a busy time year. It's really nice to see everybody out. I saw little tiny kids using the pickleball park the other day, a bunch of them, not like the one with their mom and dad. It was, I think the pool's getting, getting ready to be, we'll hear an update about that. So it's just nice to see spring and full swing. I know, I know parks and public works have huge punch lists of things to get done. But everybody knows this is when they do the town. So it's, it's a great thing to hear. Committee reports, did you guys do utilities?
Yeah, nothing worth noting.
And then, excuse me, Port Authority.
Do you want to talk about the, them installing the utility connection of the lot? Paying it back through the sales?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so utility related updates?
Yeah, I was going to just update for on that. So the Cannon Park lot. What we're looking at is instead of putting the burden on someone that's going to buy the lot, we have another landowner across the street. So we're going to cooperate and put in sewer and water. So it's going to cost us a little over 10 grand to do that. And so I just wanted to let you guys know, we should build that into the cost of, you know, the sale of the lot. So, but it's just beneficial for everybody.
Yeah, you want it done.
Yeah, you want it done. You want the lot ready to go for someone that's going to buy it. And then it's going to help out the one across the street as well. So that's kind of, the talk is two more residential units there. So.
That's nice.
Yeah, we can save you some time and report that at court.
So, yeah, awesome. But yeah, I just wanted to make the point, build it into the cost of the lot for sure. So.
Port Authority.
Port, not a lot. We spent a fair amount of time on the Barge Terminal. Just made some final decisions with respect to ensuring that our designs are going to be robust enough to kind of handle the, the, the use of that facility with the fewest amount of staff there. So it was kind of a good discussion. We got that figured out. The, because of timing and everything, you know, the share, the port authority's share for the build out continues to increase. So we'll have to deal with that, address that, but we're still well within range. And Caroline, you gonna talk about your, the success with permits?
There was any, can I?
Okay, oh, I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we're still having a holding pattern with respect to the DNR on some protected species. Permitting to, to manage that situation. It's mostly clams or mussels, excuse me. And then we did get the Army Corps permit, which we kind of assumed we wouldn't. And, and that's for dredging and getting into there. We assumed that wouldn't happen until probably next year. We've already got it. So that was a really huge step. So we're kind of continuing to lead forward and about the only thing we really deal with now is DNR.
I forget, DNR has a, has a window of time where they have to respond. I don't know where we are in that.
They're past it.
Yeah.
They told me it was coming early May, so I just chose not to push it, make a deal with it, but yeah.
I won't put you on the spot for parks still, but I'm going to get a chairman now. We usually get a parks report from Tony and Riley. If there's anything of note that you want to share. Okay, so there was a note. That is by the way, twenty percent. Okay, very good. We'll wait for, I'm sure we'll be plenty over the summer. And, and?
We approved a amended California overland CUP for truck storage and a truck washroom facility. So we didn't have any public comments and now so, so that's all we did.
All right. Any other updates from council? All right, hearing none. We'll go to our administrative report from Caroline.
So we've touched on the Highway sixty realignment. One thing to note is that we got comment from MinDA and the Federal Transit Authority that we were missing a bunch of, they want us to reissue the RFQ. So we have to reissue the engineering work for this. And we're going to try to have a tight turnaround. Dietrich nicely drafted all these attachments and verbiages. So it's just a kind of a check the box, unfortunately. But we, that's why we continue to just try to keep pushing on this geoscan stuff because that's going to get items done. And then for the apartment project, where our new closing date is accepted, expected for June. We also found some contamination and are, are learning about that. Our RAP plan was approved. I think I have it on the consent agenda. And unfortunately, they are going to have to install vapor mitigation system. And so we applied for another grant to cover that. We also submitted for a grant program to provide small grants to local developers, local builders desiring to build on small lots in Wabashaw. And so we'll see if we get that. And we also requested some matching funds on the Lawrence Boulevard lift station. And I just, and then Bolton Bank is still working on designs for the street project. And what I'd like to do is get out the list of streets ahead of time as well as potential cuts. Because I think it'd be helpful if you guys could drive the roads that we're thinking of cutting out to save money, just to be more informed on that decision. But we're trying to keep it under a $2 million barrow. And so to do that, you know, we were looking at cutting out a couple of streets. So that'll be next month. And then the thing that Phil and I were just discussing is that we have the downtown bike rental that was a ship initiative that are free bike rentals. The price of that went from 360 a year to now 1,000 a year. And they've kind of, they won't give us access to our UGUS usage data. So what we're going to do is we've opted to unlock them for now and just for one year, move forward with, with this new fee. While we evaluate how often are they getting used? Can we charge people for it? Or do we look for cheaper software or get rid of the bikes entirely? The, the problem is unfortunately, they have all of our data and are not giving us access to it. And so, and then we're also getting some kind of negative feedback about people being frustrated or wanting to come to town and. Um, and so, and then we're also getting some kind of negative feedback about people being frustrated or wanting to come to town and use the bikes, but they're locked. We can't unlock them for people until we renew our software. So, um, that's the plan is to basically unlock them for a year and reevaluate, look for sponsorships, those sorts of things. So I don't know if there's any comments on that, but.
Just so that you're aware of the investment, in case people ask you about it and want to know, you know, how they can be supportive because there's eight other entities reaching out on that, like Main Street is reaching out, looking for partners that want to help subsidize even, even in this year, I think.
Right.
Um, it really wasn't a ship initiative.
Oh, okay.
Ship kind of took a while for me to understand. Wabash area bike walk enthusiasts was a group that was convened and then kind of, um, supported by the coordination efforts of ship. So Tina would coordinate the meetings, kind of develop an agenda, you know, keep track of people's initiatives. But it really came out of a collaboration with the city. Craig was a member. I was a member. Bill was a member and also local, local Dave Logan was on it for a long time, Brian Fries. So there was a lot of investment in that. And then there has been, and I don't have the total number of dollars, but there's a significant monetary investment by Main Street. They've been able to find grants because they're on our main street that have helped with those costs. So it's really a collaborative thing. We shouldn't see it totally as our kind of albatross because it's really brought a lot of different funding sources together to get the bikes as well as the bike structure and bike signage was all kind of come from different city and non-city pots of money. So it's just, I was kind of reminded of that because Mary Fleech was saying she was going to try to get some initiative around people who might be able to fund in this.
We'd like, we'd like to continue to actively see if someone can sponsor it even this year. But we didn't want to lengthen the time that people are trying to use the bikes and they're locked out of the system. So.
And then we also kind of disbanded as a bike, as a bike walk enthusiast group or bike walk advocate group because there was so much going on at the city level with regards to the street reconstruction that we felt like what was happening at those meetings was just Caroline updating Tina, which Tina can read our, our minutes and definitely don't need to convene a meeting if pretty much everybody there knows what is happening. But that could be another option is to get that group back together.
Yeah.
Now that we have nice, beautiful streets and improved access and all that. So. Thank you. All right. On the consent agenda, we have, uh, the approval of the April regular, uh, city council minutes, the approval of the lone park tight path, um, if you were purchase new skateboard equipment, which are ramps, approval of lone park playground relocation costs, approval of Mississippi shoreline stabilization project, approval of the athletic complex skateboard project, approval of new sand for the viable courts, brush dump camera system, MPC approval of response action plan and construction contingency plan, the request for donation of fireworks displayed, city does each year, cam subdivision final plat, the main market additional final plat and appointment to full vacancy on the police commission. I think it's Jeff Law, so. You know, I do that. Great. And, uh, the mayors and gambling applications for the county fair. You have a motion approved. Does that? Dean was like, first by Dean. Sorry. Second by Gene. I thought I heard two voices. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. And now we have our public hearing. So as I mentioned, we have these land use plan amendments. It's kind of a, Christie will outline it very well. She's our, she's our, our city planner, but there's a lot of information about essentially changes to the city's planning documents as well as our comprehensive plan. So if you came about that item and have anything you want to share, please feel free to step forward. This, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'll call for, uh, any public comment three times and we would be happy to hear from you. So if you just want to step up and share anything you wish to share about this item, please do so. I'll open the hearing at, uh, six thirty four. Do you have any public comments from city hall? We still only have our, do we have any other bases there? Do we have anyone on mine?
Do you want to listen to the update and then think about commenting or?
Oh, I just wanted to know what, okay, you're then.
Okay.
I didn't quite understand it.
Okay.
Sure. Hopefully Christie's presentation will be clear. And if not, you can certainly ask her any questions or ask us to follow up. We also welcome questions at any time. If this information takes a little time to digest, all of the information that's presented tonight is in the agenda. You just go to the city government part of the city's website and then agenda and meeting minutes will be there and this is all in there. So if you want to reference it and then come back to staff or questions or your council members, that's fine too. So Christie, we'll let you, actually I'm going to call for a couple more times. Uh, any other public comment? Now I'll call one more time for public comment now. And hearing on, I'll close the hearing at six thirty five and we'll hear the presentation and then see if there's further follow up. Christie, please take it away.
You bet. Um, we'll see if we can get our screen shared here. Can you guys see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. Yay. Technology. It's a wonderful thing. Um, so yeah, we're in the process. I've had a couple of residents call. Um, the planning process is a, is a, is not exactly as straightforward as, as some would think. And those of us in the planning world kind of get this, um, land use planning, I would kind of consider it layers of a cake, which, which seems like an odd way to start, but the base layer of any planning document is really it's a land use. And then on top of that, which is the next layer would be zoning. And then we get down to those actual construction projects where these pieces kind of get further defined. And as you can see here on the current page here, the existing zoning is still R two for all of the athletic field. And the existing or the current land use is all open space. And as we all know, the, the athletic fields were all moved last year and, um, to a nice new park there by city hall. Um, the property is about eighteen point seven acres, um, and includes three parcels. You can see there, um, we talked about it in detail in the the meeting there before with comments before. And then we've got the one little parcel there known as mosquito field by all of us affectionately. But it's all still zoned, um, still zoned R two, but it's also got an open space land use. While as we moved the park facilities off the space, it no longer needs to be open space. And so as we moved forward, we wanted to make sure, um, that, that we had the ability to change the land use to something else. So that as we tried to, to seek funding for, um, highway sixty's project as it moves through, through the space, we wanted to give it a future potential use. And, um, planning commission and, and I worked through this, we've determined to consider this mixed use, which gives it the ability, these, these three parcels plus mosquito field to be something residential, something or something commercial office kind of leaves it open for a lot of other debates of what we would like to do in the future. In addition to next steps would have to be to rezone it um, before we move forward with any sort of particular construction on the site. Um, we opened it up for public hearing at the planning commission level, um, in April and we had, or in, in March, rather, sorry, March eleventh, where we talked about different, different sections of the plan. So the land use itself needed to change as we can see, um, I can walk through some of these with you. The land use is, is going to change. But we also had a number of maps. So, um, on this particular page, you can actually see that the community facilities map also wanted to change. We don't want to show a park in our comp plan that's no longer a park. In each of these instances, you guys can see that, um, we're moving the facilities and the parks around, removing it from where it used to be. Here's another one where we're showing city park. City parks throughout the community, you can see athletic field again has been changed and now it's shown down here by the pool. Um, the next map that we changed is city regional trails. Again, you can just see that we've moved the green designations there and added them to the city park over there by the city parkland. Um, we updated the zoning map in the comp plan just because we've changed a few things around and I want us to have the most up to date comp plan possible. And finally, last but not least is kind of this final map that I wanted to look at for you guys. I'll kind of blow up. Um, as you can see this, but you can see that we've now amended or we're proposing to amend the athletic field plus mosquito field to be mixed use rather than open space. So it moved from green to brown. And then we also processed a, a very small amendment down here on Phelps Avenue and, um, moving that little studio space on Phelps that was once commercial, but now wants to be residential again to meet the rest of the property. And that was kind of more of a zoning error that we wanted to correct anyway, but that is now shown as, um, medium density residential, which is what we, what we processed. So in that, we also updated the text around this to make sure that everything when the, within the comp plan shows this as mixed use. Um, and that that's addressed in text and in the maps for the comp plan. And with that, I've entertained a couple of questions from residents. Um, we, we of course re-put this in the paper and notified folks within three hundred and fifty feet of this. As you can tell, that's an awful lot of residents. I've had a lot of calls. Most people were, were mostly interested in just the planning process of this. Um, you know, what steps in this we're, we're reaching. Again, you know, the layers of cake. So land use versus zoning versus construction that gets there at the very top. We've had a couple of, couple of residents kind of nervous about possibility of filling this area and what would that mean to their resident, you know, their residential uses around the property. And so I explained to them that we really are at stage, you know, step one, it's bottom layer of this cake at a land use and when, uh, the construction of the extension of highway sixty comes into play, um, that will evaluate, you know, that development plus any development that happens around it. And then we could provide much more information on filling and grading plans and detailed construction, probably pretty, pretty much later in this program. So that was it that I received from residents. Um, are there any questions for you guys for me?
I don't think so, Christie. Again, it's not because we aren't interested. We're just happy to get to this point because we, this is what we need to do. And for residents who are listening, you know, we need a comprehensive plan. As we say comp plan, we need a comprehensive plan that the city has agreed to for, for every reason. So that when our residents want to know what's the plan, they can reference a plan that is actually current. Uh, if we're looking for funding support, we need that they need, they need to know that the work that we're seeking to do is within our comprehensive plan and that our land use agrees with those plans. When we, uh, another reason just escaped me, but we really have to have these planning documents up to date and we only do that big comprehensive evaluation, evaluation process once every fifteen years, Christina, small city, ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
These little updates don't seem very meaningful, but we, we do want to have our docs in a row so that when we engage in, in projects, the public is informed, they see it in the plan. Um, funding partners see it in the plan and, and our studies, you know, like the, the geoscan, you know, relies on comprehensive plan information to show some of the information that they need to see. So, so it's tedious, good work. Thank you, planning commission. Thank you, Christie.
And Christie, I would just add that we just make sure it gets updated on the website because I know I refu, for, reference that version, whatever we have on, online. So.
You bet. As, as soon as this is formally reviewed and, and approved, we'll update the comp plan with each of those texts so that we'll, we'll have an update formally ready for you to put on the website.
Great. So this whole report again is a part of the agenda packet. It's, uh, been beyond our city government, city council minute, uh, agenda, minute, yeah, agenda and meeting minutes. You want to see it bigger? Okay. And then, uh, oh, we have a resolution we could entertain, right, Christie?
Correct. Yes.
About the resolution, otherwise that entertainer motion to approve it.
Make the motion second.
We've got a motion from Jess, second from Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Thanks, Christie.
You bet. Thanks, guys.
To get to that question that the public had, I've had a couple of emails about that too, about, you know, how will this land use change affect, uh, the opportunity for Phil to displace water into the adjacent properties. As Christie said, it's, that's to this process doesn't address that, but future processes will, the engineering process will certainly address that. I think Brian was online, you know, the, the comment that I always, um, recall when this question comes up because it's an important question, but it's a very preliminary question is this idea of, uh, you know, working and creating an engineering, uh, opportunity for that sake that doesn't displace water to other properties and potentially even mitigate some of the flooding of other properties adjacent to this personal C. So that's a ways ahead of us. Um, road first, uh, and then, uh, having this land use change, we can move forward to the next piece. Okay. Under general business, we have a status report on a nuisance at nineteen Grant Boulevard West, nine thirty Grant Boulevard West, nine thirty six Grant Boulevard.
Okay. Um, so at the February fourth, twenty twenty five meeting, council directed me to provide a status report update at the May sixth meeting about the nuisance conditions. And, um, Mr. Bitter kindly, um, posted myself and Sergeant Wagner this morning. Um, and what we agreed to is that he was going to store all his items behind the fence. Um, so what I will say is that, um, there is a, the beginnings of a fence, um, built on the alley. Um, and not, none of the items have been moved over yet because he's still waiting to complete the fence. Um, and then there's a wooden fence in front that again, I think he's waiting for, um, to, 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 uh, to address the rock that was put down so he can move, um, move, move items across there. He can explain that better. Um, and we had a good discussion about, he does not want to administratively combine his parcels. That means he has to get paid up on the taxes. And if he ever wanted to sell the lot, he would have to uncombine that. So we kind of worked with Wendy. He's interested in just going eight feet over into nine thirty six Grant Boulevard. So we're going to go ahead and approve it because he's not looking. The purpose of combining the lots was to get a huge fence combined with the other lots all the way around the perimeter. And Mr. Bitter believes that between taking items to the scrapyard and getting items behind the fence that he will meet the deadline, um, about four weeks from now. And I feel that again, we got some of the fence done, but he's made progress and it wasn't necessary to bring this up for action today. Um, and then I just wanted to, um, Ms. Blance, do you want to speak at all or add anything or just be here if there's comments or questions?
No.
Okay.
You said this stuff that got put behind the fence on back.
Yes.
It's just, it's not all that had been moved.
Yeah. So my observations were that the alley looks cleaned up, but the front of the property still needs those items moved behind the fence. So.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Thank you for the update. And now we have, uh, the, uh, Lawrence Boulevard traffic flow signage item. And we've got Brian on it. Brian, uh, we've got a lot of textual background. I think everybody's pretty familiar with this, but if you want to tee up the, uh, highlights for us, I'm sure that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can do that. Can you hear me? Okay.
Is he, do you want me to put up that last attachment or do you think you can screen share from, from where you're at?
I can screen share here.
Okay.
About.
Yeah, we're seeing your email right now. Okay, there we go. Okay.
Let's get to the right, here we go. So you see in the traffic flow map?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll just run through these, um, traffic flow figures just to kind of set what we've been talking about here at the street commission. So this first traffic flow map shows how traffic flowed before the Eagle Center project and the amphitheater and the Big Joe Alley reconstruction was completed. And everybody's pretty familiar with this. You could travel down Pembroke Avenue, uh, to the river and then you could, uh, drive one way down Lawrence Boulevard Down River. Um, Bailey Avenue was two-way traffic. Pembroke Avenue was two-way traffic between, uh, the post office parking lot and, and Main Street. Allegheny is two-way traffic and Big Joe Alley was one way headed to, uh, upriver. So that was the, the traditional traffic pattern that everybody was used to seeing. Then, uh, as designed for the, the Eagle Center project, we made some changes and the reason we made changes was, uh, because the bus drop off location, uh, issues. So Big Joe Alley was designed, uh, to be kind of a combination alley and pedestrian plaza. And, uh, it was determined through that planning process that we didn't want the buses to be traveling down a Big Joe Alley and dropping off of passengers on Big Joe Alley. Uh, it was desired to have the buses drop passengers off along Pembroke Avenue near adjacent to the old law office building. So the way the project was designed is we put in a, a curb bump out here so that traffic traveling towards the Eagle Center would have to make a left turn. And that was desired because the thought was that when people come to visit the Eagle Center, they would want to drive by the Eagle Center and see it. And so we wanted to maintain the ability for cars. And so we wanted to maintain the ability for cars to travel down Pembroke Avenue, make a left down Big Joe Alley, see the Eagle Center, see the amphitheater. And then continue on and find a place to park. For the buses, uh, the design was to have the buses drive down Bailey Avenue. And then traffic flow was split, split at Lawrence Boulevard and Bailey, such that traffic turning right would still travel down river. But then uh, the one-way switched at Bailey Avenue. And now traffic would drive up river and then up Pembroke Avenue. And the buses could then park alongside the law office building and drop passengers off right onto the sidewalk. And that avoided buses driving down the alley and it avoided buses having to drop passengers off. Uh, basically in the, in the middle of the street here, which is what would happen if they uh, dropped passengers off uh, heading uh, towards the river on Pembroke Avenue. So we kind of listed off some advantages and disadvantages with this. So the advantage to this was it allowed the buses to drop off where the Eagle Center uh, where it made sense for safety purposes. And to access the Eagle Center. The infrastructure is in place for this. It's, it's as designed. And then the disadvantages, kind of what the issue that's been brought up is, um, it modified the, the historic long-term traffic pattern. Where folks were used to being able to drive down Pembroke Avenue, take a right and continue down river. But you can't do that anymore. You'd have to drive down Bailey Avenue. Um, and that's just unfamiliar for folks. So. And then there were property owner concerns about the buses um, driving along Lawrence, the section of Lawrence Boulevard. The buses.
And Bailey. I would add mainly and Bailey too.
Sure, and, and Bailey. Yep. So at street commission, um, there were several alternatives discussed to, to find ways to mitigate the property owner concerns of the buses. And then the issue of kind of the modification of that historic long-term traffic pattern. So we put together a few alternatives and these were presented at the street commission this morning. So alternative A um, would have involved or would involve removing the bump out here. Um, and that comes at a cost of about thirty-three thousand dollars. And the purpose of that would be to allow for Pembroke Avenue and this, this block of Lawrence Boulevard. To be two-way traffic. So that folks could drive down Pembroke to Lawrence, take a right, continue down river. But the buses could continue uh, down Bailey Avenue, take a left and then another left and still park um, along the law office. So this was kind of a compromise that still allowed the buses uh, to go. And where they needed to go to properly drop passengers off uh, in the correct location, avoid having to drive down Big Joe Alley. But also allowed the continuation of that historic traffic, traffic pattern. Uh, so those are kind of the advantages. The disadvantages is in order to do that. Um, Lawrence Boulevard in this section is about twenty-four feet wide. That's wide enough for two-way traffic, but not for two-way traffic and parking. So you'd have to eliminate the on-street parking here on this section of Lawrence Boulevard. So that's a disadvantage. You lose, lose the off, off-street parking. Also have the high cost of the bump out removal. And then it doesn't really mitigate the property owner concerns about bus traffic on Bailey and Lawrence Boulevard. So the other alternative uh, we looked at um, was suggested at the street commission. And so I'm drawing, we drew this up. This would involve uh, basically the situation, um, the way that traffic uh, patterns were modified. Like for a short period of time here prior to the downtown street project. So the street commission had made a decision to basically restore the one-way uh, back to the way it was. Uh, which meant that the uh, traffic driving down Pembroke Avenue wanted to continue to Lawrence Boulevard. Heads to drive around this bump out and then make a right. So the bump out really is kind of an impediment. It's kind of a goofy uh, design there. Uh, if you're intending to have traffic headed towards the river, people have to drive around that bump out. Probably makes sense for folks who uh, lived here for a while and are used to that traffic pattern. But might be a little confusing to folks who aren't expecting to have to drive around a bump out to continue going down uh, to Lawrence Boulevard. Um, it also creates issues for the buses. So the buses in this case would have to um, drop off uh, on Pembroke Avenue. Here in the street and then continue around the bump out to Lawrence Boulevard. The buses, the Big Joe Alley design in this intersection really wasn't designed for buses to make the left turn and drive down the alley. Um, and we do have a figure here that kind of shows that. So if you look at this, this is a figure that shows that turning movements. And a bus. And so the red lines here show the wheel path of the bus. And this shows the curb line. So if a bus were to make a left turn onto Big Joe Alley here with the bump out in place, they jump the curb uh, here. And we've seen some larger vehicles that try to turn down the alley doing that. So um, the alley really wasn't designed for that. There's also kind of a little tight spot in here. Um, where the parking stalls are and the alley makes a little bit of a jog. Um, so that gets pretty tight there. We did look at buses turning on Allegheny Avenue. They can make that turn uh, without jumping curb or anything. And if they did continue down to Walnut, uh, they can also make that turn there. So really the two issues with buses driving down Big Joe Alley are related to this curb here. Uh, them jumping the curb there and then this tight spot right in here. So advantages and disadvantages with alternative B, um, advantages, it restores that long-term traffic pattern. The disadvantages, buses drop off in the street. Uh, buses are likely going to continue along Lawrence Boulevard. Just due to the restrictions here and the difficulty driving down the alley. So you still have likely concerns with bus traffic on Lawrence Boulevard, at least if not Bailey as well. And you've got some potential confusion related to the bump out, kind of blocking that normal through lane and people having to drive around that. So then we did.
We had staff and big picture concern if you were directing staff in a way or buck traffic in a way it wasn't designed for. Does that put us on an extra liability if something occurred at the site? Because we were knowingly doing a traffic pattern that it was never built for.
So then alternative C is the last one. Um, and this really is the same as alternative B. Um, except that it involved, would involve modifying this uh, this corner of this intersection to a, a basically eliminate the issue of buses jumping the curb here. So um, same as alternative uh, B, except you add, um, and actually we talked about this this morning. I have this listed at about a twenty-four thousand dollar cost. But um, we kind of noticed that there's actually a light pole that we need to be moved here. And then I did not include engineering in this, which was prior option at thirty thousand I did. So counting for those two things, this is probably closer to that same cost for the bump out removal here. You know, just over thirty thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand dollars or so. So advantages to this, again, it restores that long-term traffic pattern. Uh, buses still have to drop off in the street for disadvantages. Uh, there's the cost to modify the curb. And then you've got that, still got that tight spot in the alley. If buses are to travel down Big Joe Alley, then the potential confusion with the bump out blocking the through lane still exists. So.
I don't know how you can modify that uh, bed ramp there. It's already uh, two feet. If you pull that, switch that back.
Yeah, there'd be quite a bit of modification here, Dean. So the light pole sits here. So this sidewalk, really the curb line would have to follow at a minimum, this red line. So yep, there'd be quite a bit of curb and sidewalk modification. The curb ramp would have to be modified. Um, we'd have to look at ADA compliance here. It's going to be challenging. Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a handicap, or it's an ADA accessible ramp that comes from uh, basically right here. This is kind of the ramp up into the, to the Eagle Center building. And we need an ADA path from this point down to wherever the, the curb ramp is. And it was already challenging to get that to work at these elevations. So this is, it'd be pretty challenging uh, to make this work. Um, there's probably a solution there, but it's going to involve some significant removal of sidewalk and curb. And that's why the high cost. So they asked this morning at the street commission, um, kind of what, but you know, what are the issues with some of these? It's from an engineering standpoint, our recommendation would be, is obviously the as-designed situation. And here, I mean, this, uh, this was how the project was designed and intended to function. Um, doesn't cost you anything to, to, to do this. But obviously you have the concerns and the disadvantages with the traffic pattern and the property owner concerns about bus traffic. Um, the other alternative that really meets, the only one that would meet engineering standards would be this uh, alternative A. Um, but it involves that loss of parking on this block and then the cost for the bump out removal. Alternatives uh, B and C really don't meet engineering standards primarily because an alternative B, you really don't want uh, buses and vehicles jumping curb. Um, and then you've got the bump out kind of in the way of traffic traveling uh, towards Lawrence Boulevard. That's really isn't a, a good design. It's not expected. It's, it wouldn't meet any standards. Same thing with alternative C, just because the bump out remains, even if we did modify this, you'd get this kind of non-standard. Um, situation with the bump out blocking the through lane.
Then if you take that bump out, uh, you would have to, uh, that is helpful to, to a bed ramp.
Well, I say we just leave it how it's designed and not spend any money and right, well enough, well, right?
Yeah, the thing about alternative A, and I don't disregard the, the neighbors' concerns. It's, it's, that's understandable. I live right there too. But if alternative A is the only one that is, you know, scout meets engineering standards, they're still going to direct the bus traffic on that two-way portion of Bailey. Because that's how they're going to arrive at a safe destination for their bus.
So where we're at is the street commission voted to table it till December twenty twenty-five. And see how the summer bus traffic looked and felt like.
I'll make most new to your addresses.
And okay, so, so we're just some of the internal discussion. They voted to table it. So if you vote differently, then we just stop talking about it or, okay. Cause as was noted by staff, we have spent a lot of Brian's time
Right.
Trying to come up with alternatives. And he's done a great job. I think where we've struggled is we can't find.
Right. Keep it as is.
Okay.
As design. I'm sorry about.
With a second by John. Any further discussion?
Jeff, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, this is, this is what I would refer in first place. I mean, we just threw that out just to see what the bus traffic. Since they got a significant bunch of bus traffic coming to the Eagle Center, we have this road construction project is all done downtown. So we'd actually be able to see how it work. And the residents would be able to get a little bit of feedback and see if it's really a big problem or not. So that's why we kind of think tick one to, you know, leave it as is and then just look at it again in December after the tour's standing over. But I just didn't put it to bed now.
Yes, I'm with you. Having traffic on Lawrence and Bailey, any of the alternatives, you're still going to have buses. They're not going to drive all the way down river to, so I, I, I'm with you guys. I would.
They, they, they're replaced. We're having buses in residential areas.
But they're still going to have.
Somebody brought up school buses every residential areas all over the city.
But none of these alternatives, other than running it down Big Joe Alley, is going to get rid of a bus on Bay. So I, I just, I would be for as designed and risk a lot of.
My only comment would be, you know, Tony and I were a part of this. And I think John and others, I mean, have a lot of investment, sure, that Jeff was. And yeah, it's a, it's a major transportation kind of a, a revisit, I guess, because you're expecting additional traffic. This was a part of a riverfront revitalization effort with state funding. We had to turn that Big Joe Alley into a plaza, a sort of satisfied vision. It's truly not supposed to function like a street anymore, even though we all have the privilege of using it that way. But that was the vision. So it wasn't, it wasn't an insignificant amount of energy and, and, you know, professional uh, advice directed toward this solution. Um, it's, it's a difficult, the entrance to that facility is a massive part of that redevelopment project. And it was considered very awfully. So I just don't know, I believe it wasn't, that this was just ragged out by an engineer and nobody, nobody local gave any investment.
I really think, I mean, council, I think we had approved those plans too. And I believe we had community involvement.
Part of, part of how it came to be is because we did have community involvement. Brian, I thank you as always.
Yes.
Do you, the picture is painted very clearly and I appreciate that.
And even just to outline for members of the public that are paying as close attention to the street commission's decisions. I think these are really great um, graphics to show people what the, the only, the only feasible alternative still requires that there be opportunity for bus traffic. Um, but from that, rest of the three. All right, hearing of further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thanks, folks.
All right. And now we have the uh, combined facility opening house, Caroline and Brian have been working a lot on this. I'll let Caroline describe where we're at.
Yep, just um, that's happening next Wednesday. And I think the only thing we're looking for is A, that council attends and engages with the public. Um, but also right now, so station one is there'll be an ambulance building tour. From, yeah, five to seven, that'll be staffed by Brian. Um, and then uh, there'll be a station that's just looking at city hall and ambulance needs. So Tyler was going to staff those boards. They'll be ready to go. Um, just wondering if there's someone else willing to just stand with Tyler and greet people and show them the illustrations of the needs of those buildings. And then I will be staffing the different options and price, price options and task impact. So just looking for, for uh, someone else from council to stand with me. And then Tim, why don't you volunteer for it? Forget it. Nothing. And then Emily is going to be at the garage entrance with um, handouts. And a questionnaire that they'll leave with. And Jeff is going to be at the garage entrance.
And the main entrance is the garage entrance?
Oh, yeah, it's a double. Well, you guys can decide, but um, with questionnaires and stuff. So we're also, oh, yeah. I think it's Jeff and Emily at the garage. And then I need someone to station by the door, giving people questionnaires to fill out as they leave a handout. So I need three more volunteers.
And just, you know, the handouts are a timeline and kind of this whole process of discovery around facility needs. Always keeping fire and ambulance as imminent, ease the board right, but looking more broadly. And then the other side is.
Um, to the timing, no?
No, I was like, um, what, what do we decide? I think it was your suggestion, the other side of the handout is timing.
The timeline.
No, timeline's one side.
One side. Oh, um, the benefits of the joint.
Oh, yeah, the benefits of every mine facility, just to see that whole list of benefits.
I plan on being there, but I can't commit.
I will be there. I would be likely a little late. I'll be for the, at that time. So I'll do whatever you want. I don't care. But I don't know if I can be there right at night.
But enough that you guys just show up and we'll give you a job.
Yeah, I could do either one or two stations.
All right. Maybe you guys can just feel where it makes out.
And I'll try to get around time if I have time.
And I agree really. So what we want is we want people to do it, get back, and then we want to get it back. And then so staff's going to put some kind of a bright little sheet there. So we can kind of see if it's in someone's hand. Can I take that from you? Or have you got a chance to do it? Just so we do get feedback. Cause it's kind of hard to be, be, be back by people, but.
Nope. So I'm sure we'll get verbal comments, but we're also hoping to collect a questionnaire that will analyze the data for you guys. So. And then the boards are being printed. So thank you, Jeff, Emily and Tim gave us great feedback and helped. If you guys need to leave, don't worry. It's such a beautiful night.
I just feel like I'm holding this person hostage. There certainly don't need to be a whole number of the public hostage on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now on to the uh, Wamashaw County City Agreement for Federal Aid for Engineering Services.
So the other good news is that um, the, we got approval that someone in the federal government will be reimbursing us up to eight hundred thousand for engineering costs for the um, new road. So we know that we're going to incur a bunch of engineering costs before we can enter into a grant agreement. And so the funds will flow through the county and I don't know, it's the county's going to be the passer agency. And then we'll apply for reimbursement from the county who will give us the money. The only thing was to avoid a bunch of extra approvals. We cannot cover the cost of the phase two that we were discussing, because that involves drilling and they didn't want to do that. So that is something that, again, important. So that is something that, again, report and myself will strategize. What, what we'll do with Jill is say, what's the least amount of money that we could spend on the phase two to keep this project moving forward, and she'll give us some recommendations. So. I think I just wanted to bring everyone's attention that it's great news that we've been approved for federal money for the engineering costs. And then if. Something happens or doesn't move forward, we're not out on all the engineering costs. So. And then Dietrich said that if his, if he's spending a lot of extra time helping us. He may charge services, but he doesn't anticipate that unless, again, it's something out of the ordinary. So he's already done. Like work that he's not asking for help. He helped me put together the RFQ, and so he's very much been great. And so.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna get very. Approval of the photo contest. Oh, I think we, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. City administrator.
First by John.
Me, or we sign the agreement.
Yep, Jeff's second. First by John, second by Jeff. Any further discussion? It's great. All those in favor say aye. Both say no. Thank you, John. Okay, so the approved photo content doesn't happen. It doesn't bring anything up for me.
Yes, it just takes a while.
Oh, yes, okay. It doesn't, doesn't leave a like.
If you go to Wabashad.org-livability, you can see this site that we're creating. So just, it just took a while to load because there were too many images associated with this. So we're. Sorry.
Well, I'm not, I'm a bit of a tea to stuff. Anyway, the, the port authority's been working on the livability tab. And it's very nice. And this is really more of an FYI, so that council remains engaged on this work. This is to. It's, it's, it's in support of many of our initiatives, but it's also directly related to their initiative around housing. So if somebody looks up. Kind of what is Wabashad like? They're not just getting, you know, the, the problem is there are these aggregator sites out there that don't always make rural cities look very livable. Because they're looking for things like, you know, walkability, which, you know, I, I would actually argue is good here, but. This is our own way to present our livability information in a way that's comprehensive, and we can make sure that it's up to date, and we're not relying on kind of outside sources to aggregate it for us.
I do have one question. On the business, it took us to a chamber. You have to be a chamber member to have your business partner.
It took you to the chamber.
Did you go to how to start a business in Wabasham? Did you go to?
Yeah, this business will take you how to start a business in Wabasham.
So it says you land for sale, city Wabash planning and zoning, Wabash County planning and zoning, business assistance in Wabash area businesses.
Is that where it's a chamber site? Okay, yes. So you're pointing out, it does take you to a business directory run by the chamber.
But you have to be a chamber member to be on that, okay?
You do, as far as I know. But we haven't finished this tab. This isn't finished, but I have that same argument. You think a really simple business directory is something that. I think Dusty almost created one already. So. Getting into a format that's useful for.
Okay, so the feedback is see if we can use Dusty's business directory that she created.
Okay, well, into that effect, we still have time on the one downtown, which is a large number of businesses that could be added to that. Actually, it doesn't matter. And Kathy doesn't realize that's up there. So to get the most beautiful and real photos and video of Wabashaw. The port approved a video of that test. I don't remember the details. There's a small monetary, there is small monetary prize, Burton. A top video and image, but all the images and videos submitted are remaining eligible for use on the city's website. So I think we all, there's some really excellent photographers that share their. Share their images and their videos very broadly on social media. We're hoping that they all. Submit something because they've done.
And the goal is to get permission that we can basically get copyright on it. So. Yep, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar prize. So please promote it, and we'll, I think Kathy's working on. Something. To launch on our website tomorrow. Right now, it's only just pictures that we've uploaded to our website, and I don't think it's. Too bad, but it will be great to have some professional photos that we can use on publicity and things like that. So.
And to, to get this funded, is there kind of. The bits and pieces left of some, some money that we have for different grants that we have.
And. Because of the marketing money that can be computed for you. A little bit of.
Little bit of landing, I think, was up for something. And then the, the group that's putting us together is doing us a great deal. So. And the port authority focuses obviously on economic development. Economic development is also housing. So that's why we should. Focus a lot on trying to get. New sites available to, to build on. So we apply for that grant to do some infill on residential housing. Department complex, obviously, that's something like this as well.
Done for a while, but I think there's an old port brochure on here that will allow us to remove that. Didn't have current business information. So it takes the place of some of these old stuff that's outdated and not be taken down.
Yeah, that's probably, you know, we probably need to shore up the port section and get rid of the brochure.
So my only comment, and I, I'll make a motion to approve the full contest. My other question is, should livability fall under economic development? I would much rather have it as a solid tab, but that's, so you guys can talk about whatever, but. Because it's not really an economic. Indirectly it is, but it's much more. Yeah, no, there's much more, because if you just went to the website right now, you would have, unless you pulled it up accidentally.
Unless you knew what Port Authority.
Yeah.
The resources. Can't, I mean, I'd be independent.
But otherwise, I, I, it looks really nice. So, yeah.
Great, we got a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion from Tim, a second from me. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Very good. All right, and now the Norris Grant Boulevard listation.
And it was just, it wasn't at another consent, it came in yesterday. So sometimes people look at agendas early, but. We did get a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to install a new generator there. And I think I'm going to work. Everyone, Pat is very anxious to get this project going because he's been running. I think the generator exploded a couple of weeks ago, like the trailer one. So we want to start procuring the generator, which may take a while, while we wait to know on our matching grant funds. And I got some comments about Dean about just some care of the existing. So we will do some cleanup, weed whacking over there. But then the other good news is when that's done, I think. It should, they'll be installing new concrete to install that generator and.
Can I ask that? Silly question. How much is this going to be used with all of the new infrastructure and all that? But I know it's not going to be used with flood, but how much more? Because what it flooded, it was used.
Yeah, so it, I, I've been surprised how often this year Pat has needed to turn on the generator down there. Remember when the transformer went out? So we needed to kick it on then. And then other random times, I'm looking at Jessica. I was surprised. It's not just when it floods, it's also when Excel, something goes wrong. And as Pat explained it, this is where all the sewer for the city goes. So people's basements could back up if we don't have a functioning generator. So.
First, who was that?
Sir.
The second from John. All, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Both say no. Great, and then donations, there, we want the May. Justice donations to the library, two thousand dollars from Fred Van Scholberg, five hundred dollars for Jane and Dennis Hager. So five hundred dollars for Dallas Hospital and clinics, to the ambulance, two hundred fifty dollars from Wabash County Cannon Association. For an electric vehicle charger, three thousand dollars from Isaac Walton Lee, two thousand dollars from Wabash County Community Foundation, and a hundred and fifty dollars from Claire Abbott. We have a motion to approve these donations. I think I heard Dean first and then Jean first, by Dean, second by Jean. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say no. All right, and there's some updates for upcoming events. May twelfth is the touch truck event, which is very fun at the Wabash County School Parking Lot from five to seven. Wednesday, May fourteenth, is the ambulance open house, which we just discussed, five to seven. Saturday, May seventeenth, at eight AM is the spring cleanup event at three oh six High Walk the Drive. Any other announcements?
Yeah, as of yesterday, there's been no movement in the legislature on a bond ability. But that's expected this time, but they, they do, they'll do.
Okay, there were two things I was going to say in my mirrors, addressing, and they just rang us like kind of, one is that we have been urged to, again. Discourage some housing bill language that kind of limits local control. I am willing to do that. I just can't remember what the deadline was, or I, I don't know which time it's from watch.
Yeah, it failed.
Okay, and then the Main Street Coffee Hour, which is on this Thursday at eight AM at the Anderson House. Is the city, the city's topics. It's Ryan and Kathy Anderson talking. It's a very nice event, just to show up and show your support. Jeff's always there. The bankers are almost always there. In fact, I think W O E might be the sponsor this, this week. So just a fun, play a bit of cup of coffee and. And show your face with all the work the city's doing.
He has weighed up.
You're about ten, ten thirty? All right, with that, we have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tim.
Sir.
We have a second from John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.